Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. Ted, if you would, call the roll, please.
Lewis?
Here.
Markin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landmark here.
Sumchin, Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Columbia Heights Public Schools Mission Statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First up tonight is the Highlander Highlights. The Board will honor the TIES Exceptional Teacher Award winners from Valley View Elementary School, Emily Gartner and Columbia Heights High School Math Teacher Dan Roncheck. So, we're going to embarrass you with all wonderful, nice things first to start with, if that's okay. This is from a press release, "Two Honored as Exceptional Statewide Teachers, Columbia Heights, Minnesota." At the 12th Annual TIES Education Technology Conference, Valley View Elementary School Teacher Emily Gartner and Columbia Heights High School Math Teacher Dan Roncheck were recognized by Minnesota Department of Education Commissioner Brenda Casilius with TIES Exceptional Teacher Awards. The two were honored for modeling best practices in their classroom and engaging students in learning. The following are excerpts from their nominations. Emily has incorporated technology into her classroom to enhance every student's learning. Emily has worked to create a classroom environment using technology as a strong tool for learning and assessment in mathematics. She has also used technology as a tool for supporting the curiosity and creativity in her students. Her students are taking virtual tours of places around the world, researching facts, and finding ways to share their information using technology. Dan's influence and positive approach to learning extends far beyond mathematics. He has become a technology leader in the building. His math courses are flipped so that he can provide individualized support to his students. He collaborates with other teachers in the school and teaches them how to create digital content. Dan uses technology for formative assessment, data-driven lesson planning, and keeping track of his students' progress towards meeting their college and career readiness goals. So, very impressive. What I would like to do is we'll give you an opportunity each to speak if you want, optional. But what I'd like to do is have you come up, if you would. I'll have Emily come up first, and we've got a certificate, and Casey likes to get pictures, so...
Thank you.
I should have probably read Emily's certificate, but it says the same thing, Emily Gartner, because this one does. Dan Roncheck is recognized for being named the TIES Exceptional Teacher Award winner. Thank you for your dedication to the students, staff, and community of Columbia Heights Public School District. Congratulations.
Thank you. I did have the good fortune of being able to attend the TIES conference this year. When you guys were being recognized, I was, I think, two floors up towards the back, but the technology there was awesome, so I could see, like, you were right there in front of me. So, well-deserved reward, congratulations. I tell this to everybody, but at any given time, it's okay, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, so this is probably as good as... Whoop, hang on, hang on. Oh, you know what? Hang on, you can't leave yet. Hang on. I kind of dropped the ball. I wanted to give you...
Did they want to speak?
I kind of took it that they didn't come to the microphone that they didn't want to speak, or would you like to?
I'm okay, that's...
Okay. What I did drop the ball on is I did not give any of the other board members an opportunity to speak, and I apologize for that, so...
Sure, thank you. Just thank you both for your dedication and your energy that you both bring to the schools here. Thank you very much.
All right. Now you can go. Okay. Thanks, guys, congratulations. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. First would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly. Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements: January 25th, Monday, no schools are grading day. January 26th, Tuesday, there's a School Board Special Election A, Election Day. January 27th, Wednesday, School Board Special Election B Candidate Forum here in the community room. January 28th, which is a Thursday, there's a 6:00 PM canvassing meeting for Special Election A here in the community room. February 9th is a Tuesday, and that's Special Election B Primary. February 15th is Monday, no school Presidents' Day, the district is closed. February 16th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there'll be a School Board Listening Session in the Family Center. Also, February 16th, Tuesday at 5:30, there'll be a canvassing meeting for Special Election Primary B here in the community room. Also on February 16th, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, will be a Subcommittee of Policy meeting in Superintendent's Conference Office. Also, February 16th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, would be a regular School Board meeting here in the community room. And then, February 23rd, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular School Board meeting, again in the community room. Next up is Correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and Members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, Communication to the Board: Citizen and Employee Representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone here that wants to speak? Okay. Next up is the Consent Agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
For clarification, the consent agenda included the Personnel Report and the Treasurer Report for November 2015. Next is Acknowledgement of Contributions. And if I could get a motion to move that forward, I'll read the resolution. Ted?
Second.
Molly? Thank you. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution: Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits School Boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any other proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, and that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $3,963.81. The detailed background monetary, a donation of $500 was made to Columbia Heights High School by the Columbia Heights Fine Arts Foundation for Art Program. The K Foundation made the following donations for student needs: Columbia Heights High School, $175.93; North Park Elementary, $95.10; Highland Elementary, $204.46; and Valley View Elementary, $71.32. A donation of $110 was made to Valley View Elementary by Box Tops Education for Student Needs. A donation of $176 was made to Valley View Elementary by Life Touch for Student Needs. A donation of $250 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Heart Lake Apartments for coats, hats, and mittens for students in need. The following donations are made to the Columbia Heights Scholarship Fund: Columbia Heights Fine Arts Foundation, $500; Timothy and Megan Mayer, $25; Nikki Wisely, $25; Carolyn Wolford, $50; Christine Winberg, $25; Pam Sigurdson, $25; Luanne Restad, $25; and Janet Vaughn, $50. Value and Kind: donations of coats, hats, and mittens to Columbia Heights High School by Heart Lake Apartment for Student Needs, estimated value $400. Donation of socks and underwear to Highland Elementary by Nativity Lutheran Church Pre-K Program for Student Needs, estimated value $60. Donation of clothes and winter gear to Highland Elementary by Christie Bartlett for Student Needs, estimated value $200. Donation of hats and mittens to Highland Elementary by Artith Burcher for Student Needs, estimated value of $170. Donations of hat and mittens to Valley View Elementary by Artith Burcher... Oops, that's a repeat. Donation of TV and DVD player to ECFE Early Childhood by Karen Kramer for Parent Education Program, estimated value $450. Donation of winter clothing to Highland Elementary by Rita Skelly for Students in Need, estimated value of $100. Donation of hats to Highland Elementary by Pat Solata for Student Needs, estimated value of $100. Donation of gloves to Valley View Elementary by Ruth Anderson for Students in Need, estimated value $6. Total fiscal year 2015-2016 monetary contributions to date, $23,496. Discussion. Hearing none. Ted, if you would, please read the roll.
Lewis?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Landmark, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Discussion Reports and Information Items. Reports from Members of the Board. Board Members will report on Board Activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Education. Ted, start with you, if you would, please.
Sure. Last Wednesday, I attended the WMAP West Metro Educational Partnership Board Meeting, and the main takeaway from that was is Chair Michael Volna was re-elected Chair. He was the Chair last year, he's from St. Anthony, and I was elected Treasurer, and so I will be able to serve on the Executive Committee again this year, which is a good way to have influence on WMAP. There were four letters of withdrawal that we received by WMAP, three others besides Columbia Heights, Minneapolis, and Brooklyn Center is claiming that they are not members, or they haven't been for quite a while. That's still up for debate, we don't know, or we're looking into that. We're still asking that they continue to pay their fair share to WMAP until that gets decided. And then, there's a fourth one, and then the other takeaway is that there's going to be an audit, there is an audit ongoing of WMAP, and the Board passed a resolution that that audit must be completed by the February Board Meeting, so that WMAP knows exactly what its finances, how they stand. There are five new Board Members in the WMAP Board, so it's quite a turnover. Also attended the Listening Session prior to this meeting. We didn't have any one from the community come at this particular Listening Session. And then, I also attended, or talked with Director Stenbeck about the Math and Focus Curriculum that we're considering tonight, and had a chance to review that, so thank you very much for that opportunity. And then, I also attended the MSBA Conference, Minnesota School Board Association Annual Conference, held every year, done at the Minneapolis Convention Center, and there's several takeaways. I'll just go, you know, really quickly through what I was able to go through and take in. Jim Bearden was a keynote speaker, primarily talking about the ways School Boards can help create a culture of collaboration, and a culture of closing the gap between what sounds good and what actually gets done in schools, in leadership positions. And then, the second speaker, keynote speaker, was Yang Zhao, and he was fascinating in that he encouraged schools to not focus on conformity, which was basically a carryover from 1930's industrial age, and making everyone into assembly line workers, and then instead focusing on design, and helping everybody emphasize their strengths and enhance their strengths. I went to a session on the TRA, Teachers Retirement Association, the health of that, and how to make that sound throughout, in the coming years, and to fiscally strengthen that program. Went to a session on legislative advocacy, Minnesota School Board Association's lobbies at the Legislature on behalf of schools, public schools, and they're encouraging School Board Members to lobby as well during February, before the session starts. I went to a session on Alexandria schools and how they have enhanced career pathways in their high school, engineering, health sciences, business communication, and something called freshman academy. One-to-one session at Coon Rapids High School, they have something similar, and they actually have a biomedical sciences program in the effort of encouraging college and career readiness, so that when students graduate, they have a good idea of what their chosen career would be and what the career path is like. Attended the annual session by Tom Melcher, he was the Finance Director for the State of Minnesota for the school finance, and lots of information. Basically, there's an even greater budget surplus, 40 million more than the 1.2 billion that is projected, and so the idea is to at least have some of that go to public education. And then, went to a session on integrating Q-COMP Staff Development, which is Quality Compensation, Staff Development, and Teacher Development and Valuation together, and that is done by a school district, and a very interesting plan, that's the St. Michael Albertville School District. And then, went to a session on helping principals become the leaders of the, you know, their role is changing as more and more is asked of the schools, and so as the frontline management in the school building, they have to constantly grow in their leadership role, and there is a Leadership Principals Academy that's put on by the University of Minnesota that has been very effective, and something that might be something that we would want to look into. And finally, I went into a session by the Minnesota Humanities Center on how to reach students of different ethnic groups and different cultures through the humanities, and in order to find that spark within them, to help them get excited about school, and to help them feel comfortable at school, so that they can grow in their learning, so... And then, the last session, last but not least, was our very own North Park, did a session on free-range learning, and we studied, we actually got to be in a setting like similar to the learning studios at North Park, learn what the strengths are and what the benefits of being in a learning studio environment are, and actually try to solve a problem, build a spaghetti tower out of spaghetti noodles and marshmallows, a marshmallow, and masking tape, and then using the setup, the actual physical environment, to collaborate, to have different types of learning environments, so that we can actually see what it's like in any learning studio. So, that was fascinating, well-done, North Park, and a great way to end the conference. That's all I have.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, let me see, it's been a very busy week, but I think I'll start out, I'll mainly give my report on 9/16. We did have the organizational meeting for 9/16, the President, the last year's Board was elected again to serve in the various roles. We do have a couple of new Board Members, some have retired, and I can't think off the top of my head which districts those were, but we had a great presentation on a new literacy program that they are working over at Wells South, and that's primarily the age group would be 6 to 12 with disabilities and cognitive issues. And what they actually introduced, and they adapted it for this age group, is the Four Blocks of Reading, which are typically used in a KDA, third grade setting, and these students, within a very short period of time, actually managed to move from zero proficiency up to, they said they make almost two years of progress within four months, 65% of these students, and these are students that typically didn't have the access to literacy. Now, the Four Blocks of Literacy basically revolve around phonics, working with words. Then, there's also a guided reading session, where a teacher would work through a book with them, reading with them, with the book, with them trying to guess what's happening next, and then testing them on whether or not they retain the information from the previous pages, and then they also work on a literacy piece, where they actually do writing. Some of these students are able to do writing now with maybe with keypads, or just writing letters across on the board, but they've made some enormous progress. We had a wonderful presentation. The Director was extremely excited and enthusiastic about this, and it looks like we may be partnering for a grant to do further research on it, so it's very, very, very exciting, and really exciting, just to be able to make that kind of progress with this particular group. There's only been 19 studies in the past 40 years that actually looked at literacy in this particular demographic, so I think that it's time that we take another look at it and see, and do what we can to make sure that they really can access their full potential. So, super exciting. I also attended the NSBA Conference, that's, or MSBA Conference, Leadership Conference, speakers were wonderful. I particularly enjoyed the speaker on the closing day. Where I took away from it was the educational system supporting the uniqueness of the student and moving forward, you know, trying to make an educational model that doesn't go from one size fits all, but instead, you know, the education is geared towards these talents and interests and, you know, just unique individuals, and I thought that was amazingly wonderful, and it was quite entertaining to actually sing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, so, just as a side note, thank you.
Okay. Molly?
Yes, I also had an opportunity to head down to MSBA, but my time was cut kind of short due to a sick child. I did have an opportunity to attend the Director's Discussions with some of our neighboring districts, and that was good conversation there. Also attended the high school conferences, and of course, a couple of the boys' basketball games, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Couple things, I think, Ted, Richfield is the fourth school, I believe, if my information is correct.
Thank you.
As far as meetings, I attended the Chair Meeting prior to this. I snuck over right before the meetings and got a chance to peek at the swimming team, they were in their diving phases, so it sounds like they're having a really good year, so it was fun to watch that. I also attended the MSBA Leadership Conference. I sat in on the Board Chair Question-and-Answer Session with the Executive Director from MSBA. It was certainly an interesting conversation, a lively conversation. One of the initial topics that came up was the change in the law on filling vacancies, and I didn't bring it up, somebody else did, but there was some interesting discussion as to where MSBA sits and the direction that they're trying to go with that, so that was interesting. Also got an opportunity to listen to the first speaker, Jim, when he was talking about your culture, and I jotted a couple notes down, I'll read them quick here, but things that I took away from the initial speaker, when he talked about creating a culture, he said that number one, you need to ensure that others understand what you expect from them. If you have bad behavior, you need to identify and eliminate the barriers to that behavior, determine between each other what the barriers are. It's really, really important that you model behavior you expect. What they see from you is what you can expect to get from them, and measuring performance using your expectations as your standards, and that it's important to honor efforts and progress, and that it's also important to confront unwillingness and bad faith if you want to move forward and create a positive culture. So, those were some takeaways that I got from him. He was a really good speaker, they both were really good speakers. One of the workshops that I sat in was called Technology School on Ethics, discussed and talked about, I just wanted to read their description, so I didn't make up too much of it, but basically what they were talking about was expectations of not just School Board Members, but whether it's staff, and they spent a lot of time talking about social media, about what staff, what is okay and what's not, staff to staff personally, staff to staff, staff to students, student to students, conversation about elected officials. It was an interesting perspective from an outside law office, I guess, and if nothing else, it reaffirmed that paths that we have traveled previously, we were on solid ground, so that was nice to hear. The North Park Presentation, as Member Landmark said, was just a ton of fun. I had the distinct honor of getting to introduce that group. I still haven't seen the picture yet, but Casey got me into one of those whirly, he's pulling it up now. They had a chair that, you gotta trust it, but it's like this big round chair that when you sit back, it spins around, it's really cool, it's not, doesn't sound like it's one that we have currently at North Park, that particular piece of furniture, but it was fun to watch people collaborating and talking, and the ideas that they came up with to take their noodles, I think there was, I don't know, I remember how many noodles, but it was a yard of tape, a yard of string, a bunch of spaghetti noodles, good for them that they weren't cooked, that'd have been made it even harder, but they had to, between them, come up with a way to build it to support the marshmallow, and then the highest one would win. Now, looking at it, it's a fun project to watch, but they talked about, you know, bringing the four Cs into it, but I mean, they had one person that was documented and recording, and they talked about the collaboration. I thought our staff did an excellent job of presenting the program, and it was a full house, and people stuck around. The speaker was getting ready to go, and a lot of people stuck around to ask questions. They had a lot of material that they put into a one-hour timeframe, but they did a really nice job with it, so was very proud to be able to sit and watch that. And I think that's it for me, so... Concluding Reports from Members of the Board, next up would be Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Kelly?
And I will be deferring my report tonight.
Okay, thanks. Up next would be then, an information item, Strategic Roadmap F, Fiscally Responsible, and Director Holmgren is going to be presenting.
Chair Lockhart, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm Kathy Kelly. Tonight, we get to talk about our Strategic Roadmap and Direction F. Just want to run through our mission, just to touch on this again, but we really are here, truly, to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And when we look at our core values tonight, we really want to talk about integrity and excellence when we talk about our finances. Out of all the strategic directions, of course, F, tonight, we're going to talk about is to remain fiscally responsible. I've included this, the scorecard, in your packets, you might be able to see this a little better, because it gets kind of small up on the screen, but just to quickly touch on what we measure when we look at the strategic direction F. First of all, we look at the unrestricted fund balance, and this is really a very good measure of where we stand, this is what our fund balance policy is tied to. Second, we look at the variation of our established budget, and whether we're doing a good job following that budget throughout the year. Third, we're looking at the alignment of the budget, and really... Third, we're looking at the alignment of the budget and really looking at how much money is actually being put into the actual classroom for our students. Then we take and look at our capital projects, time-wise and budget-wise. We look at the quality of our facilities. And then we do have a measure here where we look at the operating levy and how we compare to other districts. And then we finish up with the satisfaction of the financial decisions that the school district makes. So, we'll start with the top one, our unrestricted fund balance. Last year, if you remember, it was 9.5%. This year, it did slightly go down to 9.4%. So, we saw a small decrease, but of course, we're on the high end of our fund balance policy, so we remain in level five. So, that's the same as we had the year before. When we look at our annual variation, this is where we see some changes, positive changes. If you remember back a year ago, well, a year and a half ago now, our budget was off about 2% from where we started when we ended the year. This year, we really cracked down on that. You'll see that our budget was only off by .1% of the budget. So, we went from a level three, actually to a level five. So, we saw some huge movement in this area, I'm very glad to report. And next, we look at our budget alignment and this is really, like I said, this is taking, how much money are we spending in the classroom? So, this takes out all the admin. It takes out all our building projects. It takes out all transportation, takes out all technology and all the support pieces. It's only what's actually in the classroom. You see there, we went from 68.6 to 67.3. I think if you remember, there was a discussion with the legislature a few years back of what this number should be and it was always, it should be somewhere between 65 and 70s. I think we're sitting pretty good with the volume of dollars that we put into the classroom directly to our students, direct instruction. Capital timelines. We did have one project that got a little late this fall. If you remember, that was the actually putting up the new electronic signs, seemed to go on forever. And then we got rain and then it got cold and then it snowed, but we finally got done. But that's one reason we're at a level four here. We had to be over 90% to be a level five. The budget though, budgets were very good, came in right on. So, that's at a level five. When we look at the quality of our facilities, we really use the surveys that we send out to our community and this past year, actually, we haven't sent out a new one. So, this, I just put in the same as it was the year before. We had a 94.3% level of people that are satisfied with what's happening with the quality of our facilities. When we look at the operating levy, I'm not always sure how good of a measure this is when we look at the finances for our school district, but it does give you a true comparison of what other school districts around us are at. And we're at $609 and that's actually, it's the mean between the districts that we measure against. So, we're right in the middle. We don't have a high one, but we do have some operating money, which certainly helps us in the long run. Again, this is a level two because it's geared, measured against the highest schools. Again, when we look at the financial management, we work off the surveys and again, we don't have a new survey to work off of. So, this is 82.8 and we're still a level five. So, I feel very good about that. For next year, we're going to have to work on those timelines a little bit with our capital projects. Otherwise, we're pretty much at a level five because the operating levy piece won't change. I mean, that's what our operating levy is. We have no plans to change it, so that score of two is going to be what it is for quite a while. So, the good news is though, from last year to this year, last year, we only had a score of 75%. We're, this year, we're at 95%. So, I feel very good about that and we certainly made some progress with how we build our budgets and follow those budgets. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Director Holmgren?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we are moving into action items. First one up is the high school fire alarm bids. Board will be asked to approve the bid for the high school fire alarm.
Yeah, last week, I brought you the bid tabulation and the recommendation from Holberg to go ahead and award our contract to ECSI. With working with them, we made sure that there was nothing in the spec that was missed, everything that was going to be covered. So, we're very comfortable with the work that they're going to do and we're very happy about the lower price point that came in at 166, 190. So, my recommendation would be to go ahead and award that contract for this summer to ECSI.
Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Ted?
Second.
Laura? Discussion?
I think you said they have a good reputation?
Yes. Holberg's worked with this company before. So, yeah, we're very pleased with who's getting it and we're very comfortable that the job will be done right.
Okay, great.
When does the project start?
Well, we'll start the project right away in June. It gets a little hard because our building is pretty much full of students because we can't have the fire alarm down with students in the building. So, most of it will be done later in the summer, but they'll start working, the pieces that they can, start changing out right away in June.
Anybody else?
I think you also said that this is required under the state fire.
Yeah, every three years, the state fire marshal comes in and does an inspection of our buildings and we were written up for this. If you remember, the last few years, we've actually replaced the fire alarm in Highland. We don't replace the fire alarm over the middle school. So, we're just kind of going through each building and updating all our fire alarms.
Okay, great.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next up is the American Indian Education Resolution. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 124D.78, the board will be asked to approve the American Indian Education Committee, affirming that the committee does concur and that the district's programs meet American Indian student needs. Director Hallaby?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for having me here this evening. Last board meeting, I gave you information on the resolution and explained that it is required by the state of Minnesota that the American Indian Parent Committee concurs that the district is serving the needs of the American Indian students. So, I'm asking for action on this resolution tonight, please.
Get a motion to move that.
Come on.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Do we need to read their actual resolution then, or is this just a?
No. I defer to Assistant Hoyam here.
Their resolution saying that then we're approving?
Yeah, they voted on the resolution, the parent committee.
We just proven it, okay. Discussion?
So, the purpose of this, I understand, is just to confirm that we're meeting the requirements of the law when it comes to providing education that is compliant with the law with Indian education?
Correct.
Okay.
Mills? Here no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is the math curriculum recommendations. The board will be asked to approve the math curriculum recommendations. Zina?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. At the last school board, I presented information to you regarding the math curriculum process and the curriculum cycle. So, we began last year in this curriculum process for elementary math, looking at several options, seeking what are the options out there and what are other people using. Through the process of working with teachers, inviting parents and community members and other staff, including admin, that larger group narrowed it down to their top two and then voted to pilot Math in Focus. So, 18 classrooms piloted the Math in Focus and during that pilot, teachers took daily reflective notes and then the teaching and learning team visited and met with each teacher during the pilot to check in. Then, the entire team met together to debrief and discuss the pros and cons and kind of make some decisions as to what they wanted to do and move forward. So, based on the positive feedback of Math in Focus, I'm here this evening seeking approval to move forward with the curricular materials for grades kindergarten through fifth grade for Math in Focus.
Get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly? Second. Ted? Discussion?
I looked at the curriculum and I was really, I was impressed with it. I love the, there's a lot of technology components to it that, especially that parents at home can access. It looked like there even podcasts that they can look into. So, and I think parents, most parents, I think in my humble opinion, would be able to use this and be able to work with their students, which is key in helping them learn. So, I was, I think, I saw all the components that I think will lead to successful math program in the curriculum. So, I support it.
Any other questions for conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thanks, Zina. Next up is board topics. Any board topics for this evening's meeting?
I have a lot more materials that I'd love to share with the board from the conference and if that's okay, if I can put it in the update.
Fine. Send them to Dawn and I'll put it in the update.
Okay.
Any other board topics?
One other topic that's of concern to me is, you know, we have an election coming up on the 26th for school board member. And, you know, I've heard reports in the community that there's been, well, the lawn signs for one of the candidates says they're endorsed by a particular party. This is supposed to be nonpartisan race and so, I just want to bring up a concern that is that our races don't become partisan and are truly are, you know, nonpartisan, independent elections. And I've also heard from the community that there's been phone calls made. I don't know if that's been done by a party but, or by the campaign, but it concerns me.
Other board topics? Hearing none, we will, did you have some? Okay. Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:42.